Go ahead and start the meeting at four o'clock. Roll call, please.
This is Jackie speaking. Where's my list? Oh, there it is. Um. Pete Lee.
Pete Lee here in Colorado Springs.
Michael Stone.
Michael Stone here, Boulder, Colorado.
Pete Lee. What happened to Pete?
Did you call me again?
Oh, I did. Sorry. Um. Jessica Lee. Megan Clausen. George Welsh.
George Welsh, um, here in Vail, Colorado today.
And Ida Wilding.
Ida, Colorado Springs.
A quorum is present.
And what about Dahlia? Did you call her?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dahlia Casillas.
Dahlia Casillas here in Colorado Springs.
And we still have a quorum present.
Okay, great. I, this is Ida. Thank you. Anyone want to move to approve the agenda tonight?
So moved.
Pete? Who wants to second? George?
It's George Welsh. I second that.
And Michael. Great, thank you. Roll call, please.
This is Jackie speaking. Pete Lee.
Hi.
Michael Stone.
Michael Stone, yes.
Dahlia Casillas.
Dahlia Casillas, yes.
George Welsh.
George Welsh, yes.
Ida Wilding.
Ida Wilding, yes.
Motion carries with a vote of five to zero.
And this is Ida. Thank you. And now we will go ahead and move on to public comment. At this time, we have no public comment. General Board Dialogue. First up, we have the Colorado Legislative Strategies. Garen Forthman.
Okay, it was catching in and out, so I might have missed you calling me officially. Um, my counterpart Caroline is-
I did call you officially.
Oh, perfect. My counterpart Caroline should also be in the waiting room and would like to join.
Okay, this is Ida. Could you please let her in?
There we go. Did it work? Everybody?
Yes, it did.
All right, so Tara, would you like me to just jump right in, or do you guys wanna start off on your end first? Okay, so my name is Garen Forthman. My name is Garen Forthman, and I am with Colorado Legislative Strategies. We have been the longtime lobbying firm representing CSDB at the State Capitol. I've asked Caroline Woodhouse to join us today. She has been with uh, Colorado Legislative Strategies for, I think, three years now, and has been working with me on your work since Andrew left us this summer. We were sorry to see Andrew go because he was a very important part of our CLS family, but the good news is, is he went to work for one of our clients. So while he's not with CLS, he's not far away. So with that, I thought it would be good for us to just run through some high-level uh, reporting on what CLS did for CSDB last session. See if you have any questions about that effort, and then quickly highlight uh, the stuff that we are working on this fall. Okay.
Yeah, this is Ida. Yeah, um, I have read through. I assume everyone else has. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, yeah, then I think we can go on and, um, yeah, go ahead and summarize or hit those highlights.
Perfect. So our primary focus last legislative session was trying to get funding for West Hall. As you guys are aware, this has been a project that we have tried to get funded through the capital development process for a couple of years, and we have made great strides in getting the attention of the Capital Development Committee, as well as the budget writers at the State Capitol to try to push this project forward. Unfortunately, the state budget situation last year and this upcoming year is very dire, and there's just very little funding available for capital construction co- or projects. We were very successful in getting the CDC, the Capital Development Committee, to put our project on the top of the list. Unfortunately, as the state budget was being finalized, our project fell to just below the cutoff line, so we were not able to move it forward. Um, Andrew in particular worked overtime to try to pull that project back up over the line, and just due to lack of funding, we just couldn't get it done. So we would like to continue to work with you guys and the Capital Development Committee to try to get that project funding. How, having said that, I think it's really important to note that the state budget situation is even worse than it was last year. So we will have to work with the CDC members to see if there's any money available for projects like West Hall, and if not, work to make sure that we're at the top of the list for when funding becomes available. But I do think it's important that we continue to stay in front of the CDC so they know that we still need this building funded. Any questions?
Michael?
Uh, thank you. Michael Stone speaking. Uh, one question in this is, i- if there is ever anything that we can do, uh, uh, if there's, if there's people that, that, that we could meet with, or if there's ever a dialogue that could ever help with this, um, I- I'm hopeful you'll let us know.
Absolutely. I think it's really important to have a strong showing in front of the CDC, and we'd be happy to bring staff and board members in front of them when appropriate, and we will talk about our efforts on setting up a tour of the campus, and the Capital Development Committee members have been invited to that, and so that will be one opportunity for them to see the good work that is happening on campus.
Thank you. Michael Stone speaking again. It's, uh, just as a follow-up, you know, any time there's an opportunity for lived experience from any number one, uh, any, a- any we've of our population here, uh, I know that we'd be glad to do it. Um, you know, we're, 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 we're really doing our best here to, uh, give our kiddos a fighting chance, and this is quite a blow.
Yes, I couldn't agree more. We were very, very disappointed ourselves.
Pete?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Lee speaking. First, I wanted to say hi and welcome, Garen. Look forward to working through with you all this year. You guys do terrific work for us. Um, the general question I had was, you know, you were talking about CDC capital funding. What about the other parts of the budget? Um, are, you know, the school is very reliant upon funding from the state of Colorado, and the state of Colorado, because of the uh, disastrous, uh, bill in Washington, is really in difficult straits financially. Are we at risk of losses to our general, um, funding from the state as a result of the state getting less money and, uh, establishing other priorities?
The, that is a perfect segue into the second part of my update. A quick, uh, summary of last year's budget was there was about a $1.2 billion deficit that the legislature had to close in the budget. They did that primarily by cutting one-time funding programs that they had, that were new, and some low-level, easy-to-cut programs that were not being used anymore. They swept cash funds from programs that weren't using the cash. They did everything they could to try to, um, narrow that gap as much as possible, and they did pass a balanced budget that went into effect on July 1st. Then, the federal government, Congress, passed what is commonly referred to as the Big Beautiful Bill, and because of the way Colorado ties our income tax to the federal income tax, there was an immediate hit to our state budget of about $760 million or so. And so we had a special session at the end of August to deal with that. The legislature came in and primarily focused on changing some tax policy to bring in about a quarter or a third of, I guess it was a third of that deficit. Then they're going to tap into the budget reserve for another third of it. And then the governor, following the special session, released a list of budget cuts to current, the current budget, that closed out that last third of that budget gap. The good news is that, is that they focused to make sure that K-12 funding was not impacted. So right now, everything remains status quo for K-12 funding as we stand today with the current budget. Moving forward, next year, the last budget forecast in June showed that we are already expecting about a $750 million deficit. I know it gets confusing because all of these numbers are very similar, and as Senator Jeff Bridges likes to say, who's the chair of the JBC, it is a very unfortunate coincidence that those numbers are so similar. We will have, uh, the next budget forecast is expected next week, and we'll get an update on what the budget forecasters are anticipating will be the deficit, but we are expecting another, a, a deficit for next year. K-12 funding continues to be a top priority of both the governor's office and the General Assembly to not cut or go back into a situation where we have the budget stabilization factor problem that we had a few years ago. And so I think that they will do everything in their power to make sure that K-12 stays whole, which in turn will help protect the funding that CSDB, uh, relies on.
This is Ida. Wow, that is a lot of information. Um, does anyone have any further questions for Garen? All right, thank you so much for answering this. Tara?
I did want to add just a few things. First, related to the state budget cuts. I do remember previously in the beginning of August, yeah, back in the beginning of August, I think the governor himself released information about the hiring freeze, and that does not impact CSDB, which is really good. That was really good news. Yes, we were not impacted by that. Secondly, I've been working with Garen to set up a day and time that we can bring the legislators to campus. We haven't yet done, we're thinking about doing that October 2nd. And I think we're gonna have eight or nine so far, so we are still getting RSVPs back. But I do think to continue to develop those relationships with the legislators, inviting them to campus, meeting them in person, having staff meet them, have them see staff and students to actually put eyes on and really see for themselves. I think that is a critical piece for this right now. You know, to make sure both the budget is stable and then also, you know, that project as well. You know, that we did submit for West Hall. I believe this is the third time we'll have submitted it uh, for that West Hall for this summer, so I am very hopeful. Again, we were so very close last year, and again, just very hopeful that we will get bumped up, um, ahead of that cut line.
Yeah, to follow up on-
This is Ida. Yeah, I look forward to that too. I'm sorry, Garen.
Oh, I just wanted to follow up on what Tara said, is that we are getting very good response to our uh, invite for a tour of this campus. Uh, we targeted education committee members in both the House and Senate, the Joint Budget Committee, the Capital Development Committee, as well as the local El Paso County delegation to try to help build local advocates, uh, for the school. So, um, if you have questions about who has RSVP'd, Caroline has that, but I will say we've gotten really strong response and are pretty excited that we're gonna have a good group coming down.
Great. Um, I see a couple of hands. Uh, Tara, Dahlia?
Yeah, Dahlia, you go first. Or, okay, I'll go first. This is Tara signing. I also wanted to mention that last year we worked on Lead K legislation, and that will be continued to work on this year as well. Yeah, so hopefully, we're able to pass that as well, to pass that law as well. Thanks.
Yes, CLS has been-
Yes, I know, and I'm especially excited about that, you know, for West Hall and Lead K. I think those are two huge projects. Looking forward to that. Dahlia?
Yeah, I just had a question with the, um, you know, the budgeting and whatnot. With K through 12 protected, where does that leave Bridges to Life? Are we concerned there currently?
Yeah.
That is a good question, and we can work with Tara to try to get more information and work, um, to get an answer for you.
Tara?
This is Tara signing. In my experience so far, so far here at CSDB, um, we are truly looked at as birth through 21. So I do think that concept of that birth through 21, uh, protects us because we're looked at as K through 12, even though we have birthed 21, we're still considered K-12. So I, um, you know, so far I haven't had any concerns about BTL specifically or the birth to three programs. Um, again, because we are looked at as a whole. Thank you.
And this is Ida. Yeah, thinking about BTL, vote programs, things like that. Um, I do think that we definitely need to look for um, that as well, um, but through legislative measures, yes. Okay, any other question, any other questions? Anything more to add, Garen?
No, that was it. Um, we will continue to reach out to the Department of Education to continue the conversation about Lead K. Um, the person that we would have normally talked to is on maternity leave, so we're having to find whoever is, uh, temporarily covering for that person, and we will let you know. But that is definitely a priority for CLS to continue to move forward on. Uh, other than that, we will be continuing to watch, uh, the JBC discussions when they get started on writing the next budget, and any work that the CDC is doing, and will work with Tara and her team on anything we need for those conversations, and look forward to continuing to represent the school for the next year, and always here as a resource, and let us know if you have any questions.
Perfect. Great, this is Ida. Awesome. Thank you so much for your time today. Tara, does this require a vote? Nope?
No. This is Tara.
This is just dialogue discussion.
Right, this is Tara signing. Um, the approval is within the consent agenda for this. Yep. Got it. At the end of meetings, it's included in that. Okay.
Great. Okay, can we move on to our next topic? Okay, great. Our next, uh, general dialogue discussion is lived experience, uh, from Michael and myself. Michael, do you want to go ahead and start? Um, I, this is Ida again, sorry. We are just here to share our lived experiences. The goal is just to educate you on a few brief things, you know, maybe five minutes each, um. And just, again, an opportunity to expose you to a variety of things. Michael, go ahead.
Thank you, Ida. I'd love to defer to you and go, and go second, uh, if that's okay.
Okay, okay, sure. I mean, I could talk for days about this if you give me that much time, but I will try to keep it to five minutes. So I know, uh, you know, that I am from a deaf family. Um, I grew up in deaf culture, using ASL. I'm really a privilege to be, um, having access to the deaf community at a young age, language, um, incidental learning, culture, you know, learning from people, from peers as well, um. And not every deaf child goes through that. Um, I definitely had a bye-bye education, bilingual, bicultural, very important. And that's where, you know, you learn to read and write English at the same time learning ASL, while also learning other subjects. And also learning English through an ASL instructor. You know, and also, it's the best way for children to learn English that way, deaf children to learn English that way. Um, again, also learned about deaf culture, dominant American culture, who we are as deaf people in America, and all of that, you know, was internalized and a big part of my education. And then other types of approach to that, um, education is really more, does more harm than good. You know what I mean? For example, LSL, listening, it stands for Listening and Spoken Language. That approach does not consider, um, literacy or written English at all. You know, and when you're, you know, if you're speaking and listening, it drops off, let's say, 80% of the language because the children aren't catching that. So it's important, again, to have this bye-bye approach, um, for children to meet all of their needs regardless, you know, of their ability to hear or their ability to speak. So um, so that's why we strongly encourage the bye-bye educational. Um, and at CSDB, just to, you know, thrive and, um, achieve things in their academics and, you know, thrilled to have a new bye-bye consultant here on campus. Really excited to bring that knowledge base, um, and success to CSDB. So I'm looking forward to that. Uh, any questions? Um, that was a very truncated version. I don't know, maybe I went through too fast for the interpreter. Sorry.
Too fast, but your camera is a little bit, your screen is a little bit blurry.
Okay, any questions? No, okay, yeah, Tara?
This is Tara signing. I, I think I just want to add our students here at CSDB, their lived experiences are so varied. And we've talked about the concept of language deprivation. And Ida, your lived experience didn't contain that. You had full family of language, everything, growing up. You know, you attended a deaf school. You had full access throughout your wor- your world, your childhood. Again, language is critical, of course. You know, language development, academ- academics, social-emotional development. For these students, all of these things need to be incorporated, and unfortunately, so many of our students come to us here at CSDB without that foundation of language, that foundational language, and you know, they always already are experiencing that language deprivation, and that has a huge impact on their academics, their language, their social-emotional, really. I mean, yes, for many, many years, that is one of our biggest challenges at CSDB, definitely. So when students get here, a lot of times, they come without a strong language foundation, which means they're already behind. And we do see that some of our test scores are reflecting that. Again, that social-emotional piece, that development for students, really has an impact. And that's why the Lead Play, Lead K is critical to ensure that from birth they're able, we're able to monitor and measure both signing and English development. Excuse me, for those students. So they're able, you know, to stop, we are able to stop this language deprivation, and that leads into your story a bit, Ida. You know, just as far as how, what we see in our students here.
Yes, and this is Ida. Yeah, I agree. I mean, that is huge. Um, you know, it's so easy to fall behind in that situation. In Maryland, language deprivation is a form of abuse. It's documented as a form of abuse. Language deprivation is, so. Anyway, that is something, you know, it's so easy to fall behind in when that, um, because uh, it's easy to avoid by providing education. Um, but yeah, such a valuable part of our education, and again, I'm excited for Lead K. Okay, good. Um, this is Ida again. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Michael.
Thank you, Ida. Uh, now, this is why I wanted to go second. Uh, much like Ida, we can, we can talk about this all day, and, and I do hope that o- over time, uh, uh, my, our fellow board members will engage us in asking questions and, and and also, uh, applying all of these terms we're using, whether or not it's, it's language deprivation and so forth, to, to what that means in terms of real-life challenges and data, uh, and, uh, because there, there, there are numbers that we can share, and I think it becomes essential for us to be truly successful. Very quick on my background, I was, I've been low vision since I, at three years old. On, so I went through my education without any, I was mainstreamed without any assistance whatsoever. I learned sensory compensation very, very young and that continued for many years until, but as my sight digressed from low vision into blindness, I, I later was diagnosed with a much more progressive and condition. So I've had to learn my blind education as an adult, which gives me a little bit more of a, of a perspective as to what our kiddos are, are dealing with and, and why it's so challenging. And every, we all have our, our own stories, but so what has, what has happened with that is I, I personally, for me, in my own education, is learning what the blind life is really truly like and what happens. And when we use words, language deprivation and so forth, in the end, we're talking about literacy. And it doesn't take, it's not a huge stress stretch for any of us to understand that if we don't have literacy, what are our chances for a career, a job? Amongst other things. And, and so what, what has become critical, and Tara said it very well, that no two persons' experience are necessarily the same. However, the outcomes, there's a great amount of crossover. So the challenges that, that happen in life, to truly be successful in life, and however, the individual defines success. For me personally, this has become the, the most essential. So whenever we're, we're throwing around terms like the expanded core curriculum and so forth, the, in this case, the, the essence of blind education and really understanding what that means. My hope is that we, uh, we really dig into what this means in terms of the life of our students during school, at, at any specific age, after graduation, postgraduate, how many of our kiddos go on to higher education? And if so, whether they do or not, how much of them are, are, are able to be successful in, in life? And because in the end, the world is not ready for, for, for our kiddos, so we have to make them ready for the world. And what has hit me hard is, is I would consider myself to be a privileged person is I, I quickly learned how, how challenging it was for me and how every day is, is a huge fight. Whether or not it's for accessibility in, in general, but it's, the, the world isn't, isn't ready for, for this. So whether or not it's, it's through, through, through websites or just documentation, it's, it's a constant fight. And I, I, my hope is that through dialogues like this, we'll have more opportunities to engage and be very, very specific to, to truly what our kids are, are facing. And with a, a great deal of hope, you know, to set our wonderful superintendent up for success in that, because it is an uphill battle. And these, these programs are fantastic, but what is it, what does it mean for us to truly do our jobs and, and so forth? But please, you know, at, at any given time, engage, ask questions. And I hope to, at least on my part, to provide as many answers as possible as to what that is like. One thing I will leave you guys with is that I can't under, overestimate enough, I can't even is how important tactile learning is to our blind population and deaf blind population. It's, uh, it is, it is so, so important. And the world is moving away from tactile. All you have to do is go into anywhere and just look at, at, at what that, the technology that is being used. And you will immediately see that it is not accessible right off the bat. And so that's in grave danger, yet it is absolutely essential to learning. When we talk about things like screen readers and so forth, what it takes to be able to list, to, to understand individual characters, for example, to be able to read in a literate manner is extremely difficult. That's where things, where tactile learning becomes, is really essential. Screen readers can take you so far, but to truly be successful in life, you have to have both. And again, this is the, uh, the, as, as Ida said, the most truncated. There's no way we're going to sum this up in five minutes, but, but thank you and I hope this becomes an ongoing conversation.
Yeah, this is Ida. Yeah, you know, and I think that we should continue this, embedding this in our meetings a little bit more. Pete, I was really holding myself back. Pete?
Thank you, and thank you, Ida and Michael, for the quick insight into, you know, your lives and how difficult it is. I think, so I would recommend that we continue this sort of thing and give us further insights into it. What it raises for me, a couple of other issues. One is that we have one hundred and seventy-five students or so at the Colorado Springs campus, but there are, I don't know how many other kids around the state who would benefit from this education. And Ida in particular pointed out, and Tara, the level of deprivation that these kids have when they come on campus, when they have not been exposed to the education professionals in this world. So it underscores, you know, my belief that we need to have a continuing commitment towards outreach to educate the other school districts around the state to really advocate to get their kids sent here. And to me, that's really important. And the other thing on
Yes.
I think the other issue that it raises for me is, you know, when I, when I looked at our educational attainment reports, I don't think we're doing very well in terms of having the kids meeting the standards based on the test scores. And I realize that that's a bit of a slippery slope because, you know, some of these kids, quite frankly, I don't think, and maybe I'm exposing my own naivety, but I think some of these kids are never going to meet academic standards just based on, you know, their levels of capability to, to learn. But if we're going to send these kiddos out into the world with an expectation that they're going to be self-supporting, get a job and live independently in the community, I think we really have to rededicate ourselves to the type of learning that will prepare them to, to work in the community. So I assume that would be part of our strategic plan moving forward. But anyway, thanks, Michael and Ida, for the bird's eye view into your world.
Yeah, this is Ida. I just want to clarify in regard to something you just mentioned. What was it? Oh, I just forgot. Okay, I'll turn it over to George and maybe I'll think of it.
Thank you, Ida. I hope I helped you bring it back, but I have those same moments too. Yeah, just a thank you to both Ida and Michael for continuing to share their story. Part of the pleasure I've had being on this board is having my mind and understanding opened to, to the challenges individuals face, just, just accessing our society, our culture, their world. And, and then the challenges that our educators face, helping our kids become better versions of themselves and become successful. And I would just kind of like to, to push what Pete said, just said, one step further. And, you know, the, we want our kids to do well in the ways the state of Colorado measures them academically. But I think the best thing we as a board can do for our kids is to help craft a vision for what a successful adult looks like. And I know that our superintendent has a plan through the strategic planning process to establish graduate profile or a learner profile that's really about outcomes. And I think the best thing an education system can do is to give its students the skills to be successful adults. And for the, the kids we're entrusted with, that looks different for each kid. However, it all means the same thing, things like problem-solving abilities, resilience, ability to collaborate and by whatever means they can, things like that. So I look forward to us doing that work as we move forward. Thanks for giving me the time, Ida.
Yeah, this is Ida. Thank you. And I see Dahlia has her virtual hand phrased, and then I'll turn it over to Michael.
I just wanted to say, I know I typed in chat to like, thank you to both you and Michael, Ida, but, I mean, hearing your stories, it really made me emotional, just very deeply emotional. It's hard to even like hold it back. Because I think that it is so incredibly important, communication. When you don't have that and, and it's just so easily taken for granted, that that is, you, just others can never realize, you know, just how difficult that is to navigate. You know, bringing it back to what George and Pete said, we actually opt my daughter out of the standardized testing like each year. But CSDB has been completely life-changing for her, for us, in the, in the way that, you know, on her IEP last year was to, to be able to advocate for herself. Which, you know, that's not something that, say, in, you know, your, your public school, that you would be able to just be able to kind of work on. So her growth, you know, as, as a person, as a being, has been tremendous and we are incredibly grateful for the community, for the school.
Amazing, amazing. Michael?
Thank you, Ida. Thank you, Dahlia, for, for sharing all of that as well. You know, in, in all of these, and like I said, I'm hoping that we're going to always be addressing important data for us all. And, and one of the things are especially Pete, while you're discussing outreach and talking about the, the hundreds more of kiddos that we have throughout the state. One huge, important aspect that is the attrition.
I think it's seven hundred.
The attrition that we have for Teachers for the Visually Impaired and Teachers for the Deaf, both on campus and of course throughout the state and throughout the country. You know, I do, I mean, I love Tara, always to, to, to share what that looks like and, and how difficult it is. Anytime, you know, Ida talked about the, the, the new bye-bye teacher that, that we have in that department. But anytime that we, that Tara puts something out for us that we have a, in addition to our school, is a huge win. It's something I hold my breath on constantly, is what is, what is each school you're going to look like, you know? Who, who, you know, who, who are we going to lose and where are we going to find a, a suitable replacement? That pool is dwindling and anyone who wants to look at the, the programs around the country and how, how few and far between the, the addition, it's, it's on a declining scale. And that attrition is, is, there's a direct correlation to the success that we, our kiddos and everybody have. And it's just, it's a number that we have to track and be very, very, very mindful of.
Yes, and this is Ida. Agreed. Yeah, that's why we need to all work, you know, to recruit more teachers. Also, back to Pete's last comment, you mentioned some children being limited and not being able to achieve. I mean, is, that's because of language deprivation. You know, which puts them falling behind. They're deprived in the first place, if they're deaf and could be, you know, we say deaf plus, meaning other disabilities, it could be autism, it could be any other kind of disability in addition to being deaf. All of those things kind of add up instead of, you know, just deaf. But teachers are trained to teach kids who are deaf and not prepared to teach kids who have language deprivation. Because they were taught to teach typical deaf kids. Again, not with language deprivation. It's a challenge. Yes, thank you so much for that. I appreciate being able to share that experience, Tara.
And this is Tara signing. I did want to add as well. Pete, yes, when you mentioned outreach and how we recommit, yes, to all the kids in the state of Colorado, their families, we absolutely do that. Yes, we know, you know, that CSDB, we have to make sure that they know that this is one of the options. That is one thing. Jaclyn, the Director of Outreach, she has been working. And there is actually a position posted right now. She is shifting some of the roles of outreach to be able to be out, the out part of outreach, to reach those kids and those families and those teachers all over the state. So we are working on plans for that and how to address that exact piece to it. It's a huge part still, yeah, even still.
Great. This is Ida. That's exciting. I'm looking forward to getting, you know, more students enrolled on campus. You know, a robust environment, an educational environment for all of them. Yes, thank you for hearing me and Michael out. We look forward to sharing more in further sessions. And thank you Dahlia too for sharing yours. I mean, it's very exciting for your child. Okay. Any more questions? We good to move on? Okay. We will move on to presentations. We have Tayiba presenting on, let me see. You, no, you IP, hi. Hi, Ty. I'll turn it over to you.
Excuse me, audio description. The, we have the CSDB logo in the right-hand corner, Colorado School for the Deaf and the Blind, established eighteen seventy-four. Title Unified Improvement Plan. Overview and Key Analysis. Tayiba Naim, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, dated nine seventeen twenty twenty-five.
Ty, you have to hold on for the audio describer. When we have a PowerPoint, it's usually described. Are you? Sorry. Ian, are you done describing?
Oh, yes, for that page. Thank you.
And real quick. Ty, Ty, Ty. Ty, this is Ida. No, we have an audio describer. Ian's here, he's describing your slide. When he describes it and when he's done, he'll turn it over to you. You don't have to describe your own slide. and when he's done, he'll turn it over to you. You don't have to describe your own slides.
Next slide titled.
Jackie.
Ryan, your, your mic is off, so we're not hearing you when you're speaking for Ty.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got it now. Okay, got it. Maybe. Okay, yes. So here we go. First slide was done. Yes, thank you. Okay, so what, uh, the unified plan is, just a brief summary. It's a comprehensive planning document that's used most often in education to bring together multiple improvement efforts into one coordinated strategy. So instead of having separate plans for different accountability areas like academic, performance, teacher development, or compliance requirements, the UIP combines them into one single streamlined document. Typically, it includes analyzing data and that means that you look at the student performances, patterns, trends, and gaps. Meaning, in other words, we look at the testing scores of those students and then we use that information. We see where they are, those test results, to help us to make those informed decisions and develop those priority areas. And secondly, it also identifies priorities, again, determines the most urgent needs for the improvement. Also set goals and that's to define measurable outcomes that the school or district wants to achieve. What those things are. And then it also includes monitoring progress, including checkpoints for adjusting if things aren't working. We're looking at those goals. We have certain checkpoints. We notice that those things aren't working. We're able to change what we've been doing to make sure that that is working. Example, here in Colorado, the UIP is very widely used, very popular here. A lot of the school districts use both UIP as both a state and accountability requirement for, as a tool for continuous improvement. Next slide, please.
Title of the next slide is Description of School Setting. In 2024 to 2025, CSDB served 171 students who are deaf, blind, or deaf-blind on its Colorado Springs campus, including preschool, K-12 School for the Deaf, School for the Blind, and Bridges to Life. Additionally, CSDB provided statewide early intervention services to more than 300 families.
Okay, good to go then? Okay. So now, next, we are talking about the school, the school setting. And then, yes, 2024-25, CSDB served 171 students who are deaf, blind, and deaf-blind. To include the four programs, which would be preschool, K-12 School for the Deaf, School for the Blind, and then also Bridges to Life. Which just happens after the students graduate from K-12. Also, CSDB does provide statewide early intervention services to more than 300 families. And when I developed the documentation, I put the information right in there. Perfect. Yes. Yes. Next slide, please.
Title of next slide, Student Demographics. Bullet points, 96 deaf and hard of hearing students, 75 blind and low-vision students, 58% quality, qual-, sorry, 58% qualify for free or reduced lunch, 48.5% are identified as having one or more disabilities.
Okay, great. Great. Okay. 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 So. Yes, so on the, the plan, we talked about students as far as student demographics, which is the next slide. So out of the 100 students, you can see, um, 171, you can see that the 96 there for deaf, hard of hearing, and then there's 75 blind, low-vision students, and 58% qualify for free or reduced lunch. Also 48.5 are identified as having one or more disabilities. Thank you. Next slide, please.
Next slide, UIP Criteria and Framework. Bullet points, Priority Performance Challenges, Root Causes, Major Improvement Strategies, Action Steps.
Okay. So yes, the UIP involves discussing the priority performances, their root causes, and also some of the major improvement strategies that we already incorporated. And the action steps. There's a a summary would be, yes, summary, there would be priority improvement, identifying really the biggest problems that are holding back that student achievement. Those three parts are, again, the root cause, explaining why the problem exists on a much deeper level. Trying to understand the why. And then second one is the major improvement strategy, explaining the broad plan of action. And then the third part is action steps and involves a specific task to carry out that strategy. Next slide, please.
Next slide, title, Priority Performance Challenge Number One. Schoolwide Implementation of a Multi-Tiered System of Support, MTSS, and Improving Academic Achievement Growth and Post-Secondary Readiness for College, Career, and Independent Living.
Okay, great. Okay. So in the context of UIP, a priority improvement area is a critical focus point. The school or the district identifies after analyzing the data. From there, it's framed as that major challenge or gap in the student learning or in the organizational effectiveness for those things that really need to happen for that improvement to occur. It is the big barriers that is left unaddressed that can really keep performance from improving. It's the statement that highlights the priority that the school must work on. And then this priority, again, you know, like we're just, are talking about the performance challenge number one, this is based on that data analysis and it talks about the multi-tiered system of support. We call that MTSS. And that's the use for improving academic achievement and growth and post-secondary readiness for college, career, and independent living. And that priority was established based on, again, the data analyzed and an ongoing discussion with the team with special educators. Next slide, please.
And hold on, this is Ida. I don't know, can you see me, Ty? Ty, can you see me? Okay, Pete, do you want to go ahead and ask your question?
Sure. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Who is responsible for implementing the MTSS process? Is it a, a faculty member? Is it a paraprofessional? And, and who does the analysis to determine that the MTSS process is required in order to, um, address the challenge?
Great question. This is Ty signing. We do have an MTSS Coordinator. Her name is Jordan. And she is the one responsible to provide the trainings to the teachers, to the staff. And then that would include the psychologist. There's a team of special service providers as well. So all of the teachers are responsible for then incorporating all of the different things that the MTS Coordinator has set up to provide that support in the classroom. And then the principals ensure that they are following incorporating those things. And then we have something that's called Infinite Campus. They upload all that data there. And then the MTS Coordinator also works with his counselor and the psychologist for behavior issues as well. Depending on which level, tier one, tier two, yes, which one of those levels.
Great, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
I see a thumbs up.
Okay, so we'll go ahead. Yes. And, um, did the audio describer already read that slide?
No, thank you. Um, so the title of the slide is Root Causes and there's bullet points. MTSS Process Not Fully Implemented With Fidelity, Lack of Incidental Learning for Students, Lack of Schoolwide Clarity and Consistency in Applying Best Instructional Practices, Insufficient Collaboration Across Classroom Teachers, Special Education, and Student Support Services to Align Interventions, Staffing Shortages and Turnover Effect the Continuity of Interventions and Specialized Support.
Okay, great. Okay. So now, onto root causes. This is really the deepest, most underlying reason that the problem exists. Not just the surface symptoms. The root causes should be within the school or district's control. Meaning the instructional practices, curriculum gaps, lack of intervention systems, not really focused on those external factors like poverty, for example, or other issues outside of the school. These are the things that we can control here at the school. For example, the above slide did state the following that, again, this is for number one, as far as the MTSS, if it wasn't perhaps fully implemented with fidelity, there could be a lack of incidental learning for the students, lack of school-wide clarity and consistency in applying those best instructional practices, insufficient collaboration across the classroom teachers, special education, and student support services to truly align the interventions. Also, there are just some other reasons as well, um, turnover perhaps. And those reasons are just some. It's not an inclusive list of everything. There's actually several reasons and root causes. Yes. Okay, next slide, please.
Next slide. Title, Major Improvement Strategies. Bullet points, Reinforce MTSS Professional Development by Concept and Application and Introduce Tier One and Tier Two Interventions, including Training, Introduction, and Training Two, Applied Knowledge, Grounded in the Multi-Tiered System of Support Guidebook. Bullet Point Two, Provide Individual Career and Academic Plan, ICAP, Instruction and Portfolios That Help Students Build Skills, Gain Experiences, and Practice Self-Advocacy So They Are Ready for College, Training, Work, and Independent Living. Third Bullet Point, Provide Targeted Professional Development on Differentiated Instructional Strategies to Meet the Needs of Diverse Learners, Including Those with Multiple Disabilities.
Okay, okay. Okay, so, major improvement strategies. This is the big picture approach or the plan of action that a school or district commits to in order to address those priority improvement areas and their root causes. So think of it as a bridge, if you will, thinking on one side, it's what's wrong, that's the priority need, and what we'll do about it, the specific actions on the other side. So, some of our major improvement strategies for priority number one is the following. Yes. So, again, the reinforce MTSS Professional Development by Concept and Application and introducing Tier One and Tier Two Interventions, including Training One, for example, what MTS is, an introduction to that. Training Two applies that knowledge and then also grounded in the Multi-Tiered System of Support Guidebook that really helps with the MTSS. Again, that guidebook for that. And then also provided individual career and academic plan, ICAP. And it's frozen for me, it's frozen for me, an instruction portfolio that helps students, I have, I don't see anybody, can you take it? Um, provides individual career academic plan, ICAP.
Instruction portfolios that help students build skills, gain experiences, and practice self-advocacy so they're ready for college, training, work, and living, and provide targeted professional development on differentiated instructional strategies to meet the needs of diverse learners, including those with multiple disabilities. Next slide, please.
I'm good now. It says I'm unstable.
Title, Action Step. Fully Implement the Updated Multi-Tiered System of Support, MTSS, Guidebook, Including Tier Two and Tier Three Sections and Provide Structured Training for Staff on Data Tracking, Progress Monitoring, and Referral Processes. Three bullet points, start and end dates. September 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. Second Bullet Point, Resources, CSDB MTSS Guidebook, Contracted Coaching Supports. Third Bullet Point, Key Personnel, MTSS Coordinator, Instructional, Instructional Strand Leaders, Principals.
Okay. So, the next part is action steps. And this is really a specific task, if you will, it has activities that the school or district will carry out with the major improvement strategies into practice. It needs to be very specific, something that clearly states what will be done. It needs to be measurable in order to show how progress will be tracked. Also time-bound deadlines and timelines, updates. So assign the, who's responsible for each. It needs to align with the staff, the different people who are part of that as well, who are gonna be referring that referral process and monitoring it. Again, that measurable time to include deadlines. It is time-bound, again, a start and end date. 9/1/25, again, like it was shown, 2/6/30/26. Also, and we're assigning those people who are responsible for each to align and directly support those strategies. For example, one action step to address the priority one with root cause is inconsistent implementation of MTSS. Perhaps that could be not having a coordinator. So really, the guidelines, you know, they would really need to submit everything to see all of the action steps that are being addressed. We really need that documentation. And then next slide, please.
Next slide, title, Action Step. Develop and Implement a Schoolwide Homework System K-12 to Reinforce Literacy and Numeracy and Numeracy Skills Ensuring Consistency Across Programs in Alignment with Classroom Instruction. Bullet Points, Start and End Dates, September 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. Resources, Homework Templates, Digital Platforms, Planboard, Teacher Collaboration Time. A third Bullet Point, Key Personnel, Principals, Teachers, Instructional Coaches.
Okay. So, this year I've requested that our students be assigned homework, K-12, for just an average of 15 minutes every night. And that is something that I've been working And that is something that I've been working on to set in place this year with the principal's support. And so this would be considered another type of action step to address the priority number one with the root cause as well, to maintain that implementation of the system and processes. And then next step, please.
Title: Action Step. Establish Structured Collaboration Protocols Among Classroom Teachers, Special Education Staff, Dorm Staff, and Student Support Services to Ensure Alignment of Interventions and Instructional Practices. Expand Family Engagement Through Resource Sessions, Parent Meetings, and Training Workshops Focused on Reinforcing Academic Communication and Independent Living Skills at Home and in the Residential Hall. Two Bullet Points. Start and End Dates. September 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. Second Bullet Point. Resources: Collaboration Protocols and Meeting Templates, Family Engagement Workshop Materials, Resource Session Content, Parent Meeting Resources, Translation/Interpretation Supports, Professional Development Funds.
And now, yes, if you notice that I am missing something, like who is involved, I needed to add that to the PowerPoint, yes, to the slide. So who's been involved would be the principals, the director of curriculum instruction, myself, family liaison, who are able to like support service providers, you know. I should have added all of that in here, yes. There's a little part here that I guess should have been in there, but yes, all of those people who were part of that. And this year, I've also requested that we engage families in residential life more in order to support priority one with the root cause as well. Requesting that we add through K-12, again, the 15 minutes every night, again, with the principal's support, but also to engage families more in that dialogue, that discussion, to be part of their student's success, their children's success. And then that would be another type of action step that we would use for this root cause to engage, again, the families into the residential life. And next slide, please.
Title: Other Priority Performance Challenges. Priority Performance Challenge Number Two: School-Wide Implementation of the Multi-Tiered System of Support (MTSS) for Social-Emotional Learning and Behavioral Expectations. Priority Performance Challenge Number Three: A High Percentage of Students Are Identified With Significant Deficiencies in Reading and/or Numeracy.
Okay. So, if you review the document, there are two other priority challenges, two and three, and I wish I had the time to explain all of them, but unfortunately, my time is limited. But just in general, the other two priorities, school-wide implementation of that MTSS for the social and emotional learning behavior expectations, and then also three, yes, again, a high percentage of students is identified with significant gaps, language deprivation, literacy, and numeracy gaps as well. So, if you review the documents, you will see that the root causes and the major improvement strategies and the action steps for those as well will be included in there. And that is the same process of following those as priority one, exact same concept with the second and third one as well. Next slide, please.
Title: Next Steps for Tiered Support. CSDB has established an MTSS Foundation and improved staff practices. Bullet Point: Tier One and Two interventions are not yet fully operational, sorry, not yet fully implemented. Next Year's Focus. Bullet Point: Embed Tier One Instruction. Next Bullet Point: Develop Tier One and Two Identification and Interventions.
Okay, so CSDB has established the MTS Foundation and improved upon staff practices. The tier two and tier three interventions are not yet fully implemented yet. Next Year's Focus. We really want to focus on embedding that tier one instruction and then develop that tier two and three identification and interventions. The progress that we've made so far is, again, we built that foundation for MTSS Handbook, the staff training, and the tier one guidebook. And moving forward, staff training will become more individualized, focus on high-leverage, evidence-based practices to strengthen differentiated instruction. And then also, the MTS coordinator will provide continued coaching until tier one is truly fully embedded in daily instruction. The training that's happened, staff have participated in multiple MTSS trainings, an overview, different overview sessions, targeted in-person trainings, and we do need to develop online modules with accessibility updates. And now the challenges that remain. Target goals for tier two and tier three interventions and student identification, those students who have not yet been identified. And that is because just working on staffing and time constraints. Also, MTS coordinator will lead work on identifying students accurately and matching them to those tier two and tier three interventions. The positive impact of this system, systems improved, tier one practices were more formalized, staff aligned with state MTSS expectations, more consistent use of common language and processes. Next slide, please.
Title: Next Steps for Student Success. Subtitle: Additional Priorities. Bullet Point Number One: Strengthen ASL English and Braille Literacy. Bullet Point Number Two: Support Social-Emotional Learning (SEL). Bullet Point Number Three: Ensure Equitable Access to Academic and Social-Emotional Supports.
Okay. Trainings that have happened and next steps. Additional Professional Learning in Bilingual Grammar Curriculum (BGC), finger spelling our way, and restorative practices used to strengthen ASL English literacy and school climate. And for the school for the blind, we are following a literacy action plan, targeted training in braille instruction aligned with the science of reading utilizing the Duxbury program. And then the next plan would be to implement that literacy action plan with individualized braille instruction, that team. And then also, in the school for the deaf, the staff will use the Body of Evidence Tool to identify significant reading deficiencies, excuse me, SRDs, and to guide targeted instruction. The mental health team will also adapt SEL curriculum to meet academic and the social emotional needs. And looking forward, looking ahead, the foundation is in place again for the tier two, three interventions. And then for 2025 UIP, it will continue to prioritize the MTS in both academic and social emotional domains. And also to make sure, ensuring equitability, rigorous support for literacy, numeracy, and STL growth. Yes, and that wraps up my presentation. Thank you.
This is Ida. Thank you so much for your time. I was on diligent boards. I wasn't able to open it. I'll try again and maybe upload that again. I'd love to take a look at that and read that. Very exciting to see how this process goes moving forward for the sake of our school. Great job. Any questions from the board? Tara?
That's Tara signing. And I do want to add that there are some connections between conversations, you know, at the start, you know, of the meeting that we had today about the impact of that language deprivation for deaf students. And that is included as one of those root causes that Ty spoke about, just to ensure that we are, again, every student comes here in different places, we have to look at where they are first and be able to identify the appropriate level. Is it tier one? You know, it looks different based on their language, if they have language, if they don't have language, we really have to adjust our approach depending on that, again, because of those language gaps. And it is very similar for the blind students as well. When they arrive here in different levels of braille competency, literacy, printed competency, concept development, all of those things that we see that those gaps, those missings, again, related to the deaf kids as well, you know, blind schools are not getting that incidental learning as deaf students aren't. So, program designs to really address that, and again, with those varying levels. MTSS truly is how we can create this system to monitor that, all of those different areas. Language, braille, academics, the social emotional piece as well, that's huge. So that's truly the how, and ensuring that we are using best practices for instruction. So I just wanted to add that linkage to our previous conversation, just how this MTS ties into that.
Okay, this is Ida, yes. And it's crucial that we address each and every one of those areas to make sure that academic success is in place for students. We all want that. Any further comments or questions for Ty? Okay, great. Thank you so much for your time tonight, Ty, and everything that you've been doing.
Bye-bye. Thank you, bye-bye.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to our next presentation. So we have Kathy Imter, related to school safety. Let's see where we are on the agenda. Safe School Report, there we go. I'll turn it over to Kathy. Yes, hello. I am here to share with you information about safe schools, the Safe School Report. I will keep it brief. You do have a copy of this in your board report, so I will just summarize, you know, a high-level view, some of this information. For those of you that don't know, Safe School Report is required from the state, and we have to report about our discipline, our IRs, we call them, they're the incident reports, we call them IRs. At the end of the year, we compile everything and then submit it to the state. And we also like to look into that more in-depth for our own use every quarter. So we're looking for trends, what's happening, you know, in which programs, what discipline is happening, where we need interventions, if we need them. So really, the biggest two that we have, that you're going to notice on the report, are called disobedience, and the second one is detrimental behavior. So those are the two that we see the highest numbers in. There's a few outliers, but those are the two biggest ones, two biggest areas of our school. And one thing that I do want to show is that you're going to notice first quarter, the number was very high in both of those areas, but if you look at the subsequent quarters, you see that number go down. And that just shows us how our interventions are helping. Some of our students, you know, need behavior interventions, some need safety plans, but we notice that number fluctuates with behaviors, and that's where we intervene with that. Also, comparing the program for the blind and the program for the deaf through these numbers, and really, each school kind of takes its turn. You're going to notice first quarter, blind school was higher, second quarter, deaf school was higher. So they just play this kind of balance game. And again, it just depends on the students, their needs. And also, on this paper, you're going to notice that out-of-school suspensions, theme high, we had, let me see, 20 total OSS. But really, that's the number of days, not the number of incidences. So if one student had an incidence and was suspended for three days, there's where we're counting three. So we really watch OSS because in special ed, we have special rules, requirements for students to not miss instruction at school. And if the student has frequent OSS, then that triggers a whole different process because we are responsible for providing special ed services for those students. If they're not in school, then we can't provide that service. So we do try to watch OSS days and meetings with staff. We discuss how we can help that student to decrease that number of days. And I see Pete has his virtual hand up, but before you ask, Pete, I also want to share that one of our targeted goals for this year, that we, you're going to see in the UIP that Ty just was talking about, includes more restorative practices. So that is included in our school programming, so we can address more of those kinds of behaviors as they come up. We trained two people last year on restorative practices, and we did use that some, if it was appropriate. And this year, we are more committed to embedding that more restorative practices in our programs during some of these behavior incidences. Pete, I still see your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Kathy. You're reading my mind. I was absolutely thinking about where do you apply restorative practices in cases of misbehavior on the parts of kiddos, and you answered that question. And, you know, the more you train, the more you utilize, I think, the less you'll see out-of-school suspensions. The other question I had though is, you have a number of instances, say 57 instances or whatever, I'm not looking at the chart, of willful disobedience. Is that one kid being disobedient 57 times, or 25 kids being disobedient twice? Or I'm more interested in the frequency, I'm as interested in the frequency and the repetition as the absolute number.
Yes, you're right. Pete, you're right. So this number that you're seeing is the number of incidences. So for example, 39 incidences, second quarter, it could be three kids. But we do have that data. We do collect that, and we look over it, you know, perhaps MTSS will get involved, behavior contracts with the team, you know, speaking with the student. Depending on the student, we might contact the district to ask for district's support. Maybe we need more support because we don't have that level of support at our campus for them. So we might reach out to district to ask for that additional support to help us, help the student. So, for students who have high numbers of incidences, we... So for students who have high numbers of incidences, we we're looking for what's next, you know? So we cannot resolve all of these within our system. And in that case, we will look at the next step to see. Um, but you're right, many of these are a few students, not you know, counted, it's not a count of all the students together. Tara?
Tara signing. Again, I do want to emphasize the connection between language deprivation.
Right.
Often we see kids who don't have that strong foundational language. And so they don't have the ability to communicate their wants and their needs. They've never learned because they didn't have access to that language, you know, or that incidental learning piece. To where the kids maybe, you know, just kind of, you know, kids might be just playing, but they're also listening, they're listening to mom and dad how they're problem solving something. And they pick that up as a hearing child. So they are having that incidental learning. So again, it goes back to a connection with that language deprivation and behavior as well. And for blind kids here, part of the ECC, specific to teaching some of those social emotional skills as well. Because again, they don't always ha- naturally pick up these different things. You know, those social cues, those visual cues, you know, again, that's a connection as well. So you can see the connections between both populations, that incidental learning and lack thereof. So again, just want to really, again, emphasize that it connects back to that example of the impact that our students have because of those things.
Yeah, and this is Kathy. I would also mention that many of our students who are new in the fall, they've been in public schools, they've never experienced peer groups who are their equal, who they're actually equal with. If you think about a public school, for example, a high school, a student who is deaf or is blind with a para walking around the school all day long, they don't have friends who they're interacting with. They don't have the opportunities to have fights and conflict and solve problems, to experience a little bit of bullying, to become a bully themselves, you know, any of those kind of normal teen kid experiences that kids go through when they grow up. Um, so then they arrive at CSDB. And see that they're the same as everybody else. And so, you know, they can flex, you know? So you know what I mean? So there's a lot of it, you know, like this teaches them about some of that, you know, your social skills, that they've never had the opportunity to try out before. In their public schools, because they've been isolated. You know, they had a lot of adults taking over things for them. Um, they didn't have the opportunity to, like I said, you know, to get into conflict, to bully each other as friends or teachers. And now they have the opportunity and they're going to take it. Um, and it's not going to work for them. So they're going to learn to, you know, some of those um, pro-social skills. Any other questions? This is Ida, yeah. Um, just an interesting topic of discussion, right? So first quarter being high for specifically deaf students, I'm not surprised because they don't have communication all summer long. Um, you know, and now they're back and they're able to express themselves. And I mean, you know, maybe they should be quiet in class, but you know, they're just there, you know, showing behaviors themselves. And you know, these challenges, you know, that we need to deal with a little bit more, but you know, just something to dive into more in depth. Um, you know, and also the discussion about a full moon, you know, is that also? Do we document things like that? So yeah, just to more internally as staff at those incidences happening, you know, did staff, you know, have training? Did they discipline? Did they give them a warning? What is the process from staff if an incidence occurs? Yeah, and this is Kathy. One thing I did notice is this data also includes a number of times that students are sent out of class. And the number is pretty high. So for me, I would say that maybe teachers need more strategies in classroom management, how to help students in class and keep class time for more time for instruction and not sending them away so much. Because that number does seem uh, pretty high this year. Just something for us to notice and to target for future trainings, um, especially with our new, new teachers. Tara?
This is Tara signing. Yes, absolutely. So this Friday, there will be some training happening over in the deaf school, specific to classroom management and different strategies, what to do. I think we have twelve, like a couple of different sessions to support those new teachers. I mean, yeah, we need some trainings, they need some support as well. So yeah. So the dean of students will be able to provide those trainings this week on Friday. And in order to support those teachers. And what's nice about that data is that we can look at these different types of trends. For example, you know, is it always happening during passing period or break time? You know, between classes or is this the unstructured time that's happening? So we can really look at exactly what's going on and it targets those specific break times and we can look into that. Maybe, maybe there's a teacher who has a high number of referrals. Again, we're able to look at that and see maybe that specific teacher needs more support. Specific strategies need to be implemented in the class itself. So we're really able to analyze the data a lot and use it. We can look at the locations even. Does this always happen in the cafeteria, for example? Then we're like, what's happening there? What's up there? What's going on? So we're able to really go in depth and know exactly pinpoint where it's happening, who, what, so. And that leads to our improvement, to be able to provide more support by training, strategies to staff, definitely.
Yeah, this is Ida. Oh, no Kathy, go ahead. Oh, no, you go ahead. Okay, this is Ida. Um, I was just thinking about um, cafeteria, we have three new cafeteria staff, right? That's exciting. So maybe you'll see an improvement there. But anyway, thank you Kathy for that information. It's so valuable and important to analyze and look at. And yeah, I'm looking forward to using it to make improvements. Thank you for your time tonight. Thank you. All right, bye. Anybody else have any questions? Nope. Okay, great. Thank you Kathy. Okay, we have arrived at the consent agenda. Who wants to move to approve it? George? Oh, George, Pete, George?
Well, restly for it, Pete. This is George Welsh. Um, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'd like to second, I'd like to second George's motion. And just for information purposes, the Colorado Legislative Strategies Annual Contract is forty five thousand dollars a year. Just point of information.
That's correct.
Yes, this is Ida. Yeah, I think last year it was the same forty five thousand, might have been forty thousand, forty five thousand is the same price, yeah. Okay, great. Um, I recognize the motion and the second for the consent agenda. Roll call please.
This is Jackie. Pete Lee?
Pete Lee, aye.
Michael Stone?
Michael Stone, aye.
Dahlia Casillas?
Dahlia Casillas, yes.
George Welsh?
George Welsh, yes.
And Ida Wilding?
Ida Wilding, yes.
Motion carries with a vote of five to zero.
Okay, this is Ida. Thank you for uh, passing that and um, I'm thrilled for the new bye-bye consultant. Um, and hopefully filling those cafeteria positions, has filled the cafeteria now, so awesome. We will move on to action items. I see three, six point one, six point two, six point three. And that is what we are voting for first reading because the state is actually requiring us to go ahead and pass that. So we need to do an emergency immediate, um, make it effective immediately, rather. So we will vote formally next meeting, October, what is it? I'm looking something. Um, so the next board meeting, we will vote to pass second reading. But for now, we do need to vote on first reading uh, with immediate action. What am I trying to say? Effective immediately. Any discussion on six point one? Pete?
Uh, I'd just like to have a brief explanation of what the policy is in uh, six.
Okay, six point one, sure. The state requiring the policy of how to release student informa- uh, student records, rather. Records, information on students, that's six point one. We do have to comply with the state on that. Um, so our policy is just adjusting to align with the state. Any questions for Jason? If you want further explanation, he's here. George?
Yeah, um, and I know we did receive some information, uh, correspondence that, that helped us understand this. So I make a motion that we approve um, this policy on an emergency basis.
Great, thank you Pete.
Second motion.
Great, thank you. I recognize the motion to approve uh, the policy effective immediately. Roll call please.
This is Jackie. Pete Lee?
Pete Lee, yes.
Michael Stone?
Michael Stone, yes.
Dahlia Casillas?
Dahlia Casillas, yes.
George Welsh?
George Welsh, yes.
Ida Wilding?
Ida Wilding, yes.
Motion carries with a vote of five to zero.
Great, this is Ida, thank you. Next, six point two. The policy related to, uh, let me see, what was it? Relations with the state and federal agencies, how we relate. Um, again, the state is requiring us to move on this one. Any questions or discussion or a motion to approve it? Pete?
Uh, well, before we approve it, um, I just wanted to get an understanding of how cooperative are we going to be if ICE shows up on our campus and wants to go into our buildings to extract uh, students of uh, Hispanic heritage or uh, yeah. I know the state law says that we don't necessarily cooperate with them. I just want to, that was sort of the impression I got from the policy, but it wasn't all that clear to me. Maybe Jason could help provide some clarification.
Uh, sure, this is Jason. Uh, that's a good question, Pete. Um, so as I mentioned in my email, this came out of a bill designed to uh, help schools better protect students who are immigrants and their families. Um, what, what your question is about i- is generally covered in the regulation that goes along with this. So the, the six point two uh, really adds just two basic provisions. Uh, one says that CSDB will develop guidelines for when it gets contacted by immigration officials. And then that C- CSDB is uh, committed to protecting the rights of immigrant students. The, the, the sort of more procedural and interesting part is in the regulation. That was developed based on a Colorado Association of School Boards model. Um, and it, it basically says that the school, and again, I'm, I'm kind of oversimplifying here. But it basically says the school will cooperate to the extent it's required to by law. So meaning if, if immigration officials show up at the school and have a judicially or court ordered warrant for a particular student or uh, order for particular information. Again, court ordered being key, not just something that someone within their offices kind of signed off on or made up. But, but an actual court order, then CSDB will cooperate. And then it spells out some of the procedures about what that will look like, who the designated spokesperson for the school is and, and what, what, what will happen um, when they do have that. And then if they don't have that, what'll happen in that circumstance?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Happy to answer any other questions now or in between the meetings uh, as you consider it further before second reading.
Yes, and this is Ida. Sorry, I missed your hand, Michael. Did you have something as well?
Michael speaking, no, thank you. I, 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 I do want to thank our council though, for, for moving on this so fast and being so thorough and uh, as, as usual, having our back.
Mm-hmm. Yes, this is Ida, thank you. Okay, great. Any further questions? Does somebody want to move to approve the policy? Michael?
Uh, so moved.
Okay, Pete?
Uh, second, the motion.
Okay, definitely, this is Ida. I recognize the motion in the second to approve the policy under six point two. Roll call please.
This is Jackie speaking. Pete Lee?
Pete Lee, aye.
Michael Stone?
Michael Stone, yes.
Dahlia Casillas?
Dahlia Casillas, yes.
George Welsh?
George Welsh, yes.
Ida Wilding?
Ida Wilding, yes.
Motion carries with a vote of five to zero.
This is Ida, thank you. Moving on to six point three with community relations. Any questions? Um, this is Ida. Um, I'm assuming that that is similar in terms of relations with state and federal agencies and this one with relations with community. It could be uh, media, community. Um, does that include parents, I wonder?
This, this is.
Or does anybody have a motion to approve the policy?
I can answer the question just quickly. Uh, this is Jason. Um, so the, the policy, the, the regulation, the one, the six point three specifically addresses federal immigration officials. Uh, if they were to show up on campus or if they were to request information. So any, anything else, parents, media would fall under other policies. This is just specific to uh, immigration officials. And it essentially says what I answered in response to, to Pete. I was just skipping ahead to six point three.
Okay, this is Ida. Yes, great. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the policy? Dahlia?
I'll motion to approve six point three.
Perfect. George?
Uh, I second that motion.
Great. This is Ida, thank you. I recognize the motion in the second to approve policy under six point three. Roll call please.
This is Jackie speaking. Pete Lee?
Pete Lee, yes.
Michael Stone?
Michael Stone, yes.
Dahlia Casillas?
Dahlia Casillas, yes.
George Welsh?
George Welsh, yes.
Ida Wilding?
Ida Wilding, yes.
Motion carries with a vote of five to zero.
Hey, this is Ida. I just want to thank you so much for a great meeting. I feel we got really connected into some deep information here and made a lot of progress. So I hope we can process this information, look forward to the next meeting. I just also, um, please remind, I wanted to remind you to please let Tara know which committee you wanted to be a part of. And uh have a wonderful couple of weeks before we see you at the work session. Um, adjourned at five fifty. Have a wonderful week and weekend. Bye, everyone. Hmm, bye.
Thanks Lisa. And Ian and Ruben?
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night, y'all.
You too.